Okay, I'm gonna call the order the. Alex Public School School Committee meeting of January ninth. And. First sort of this here public. Comment. Public comment. See if there's anybody raising their hand. See any? No correspondence. For the report, the minutes of December twelve. This chairman will move to the top of the minutes of December twelfth. My second. Questions, edits? You have none? I'll go over on favor.
Hi.
I am a new. And I just want to mention regarding the agenda, we moved the budget presentation through schedule for tonight to. The twenty third. On because. Doctor everyone was only two weeks in, you know, felt we'd use a little time. And also with interim principal coming in and so we're going to have. The twenty third will be the presentation, the thirty, the elementary and the whatever the next day is. Or certain student fact, I think it is, will be the eyes for presentation.
Is that when we move to twenty?
That was that was. That's central doing it, you know, late. And then Tim will have to come back to this.
Is there an official start date for the interim principal?
Twenty or? Okay. Moving on.
Sure, I'll try to move through this relatively quickly. I. I realize that if it's highlights and recognition, a lot of this is just information, but I think it's important information. So. Again, thanks everyone for the long welcome. It hasn't quickened a month yet. I don't mean to say that it feels like it's longer than a month, but it hasn't been a month yet. And it's been great to just continue to meet people. I've met with the cafeteria staff this morning. And it was fantastic. And so it's me and people in the goals. I'm able to visit a classroom more as part of the holiday break. And it was a fantastic lesson by a fantastic teacher. And again, really want to thank the central office team. Melissa Sue and Amy were just kind of holding me together. Appreciate their good work. I'm hoping to continue to get time with school committee members one on one. So I know I owe a couple of you. Invites to do that. So if and when we can sneak some time, just spend one on one, I'm happy to do that. I know with three days, we get a little challenging, but. I would figure it out. So you know each other. I'm happy to report that right now we had a spike in L. Last prior break. Most of the flu. But we are, we did see a little bit of an increase in COVID too. But right now we're looking pretty good. Tense and strong. Last couple of days and. I sent out a brief to parents around COVID and flu information, just reminding everyone to be diligent about it. I did speak to the nurse today and I said, is there anything you want me to communicate to the general community? And they said. Just be sure to let them know, keep us, keep communicating with us. Let us know what's going on. If you have any questions around, but he stayed home or come to school, just reach out. We need to know what's happening with you and the children and it's helpful to have that information. So I pass that along. To you all, because I would expect we will see another bubble at some point, but at this point we're in good shape. It's been fun sort of watching the, the activities and athletic teams. Progressing winter months or our kids are doing fantastic. And what I always say to students, whenever I have a chance to get involved. You have a lot of, I just go through the budget and seeing all the activities and clubs you have. There's amazing level and breadth of opportunity. And so I encourage you to do things after school. We continue to hope for snow for you. Yeah, I mean, the school is in session, Joe. But weekends are good, but we're hoping to give you all some snow, so we can do some skiing, both on the slopes and on the trail. So. I did want to point out that I had others from Megan Porter and Scott Wade, advisors of the No Place for Hate Committee. They're assembling a committee of students to work on the ADL. You know, no place for hat, I hate designation. And I was unable to make the meeting, their first meeting, and I'm hoping to get to the next one. And I think that's going to be a great initiative for the middle and high school. Related to that. I, with the support of the admin team, reached out to our new district attorney, Tim Mr. Gru. Previously, historically, they've done some work on internet safety. It was a topic that I think we heard from the administrator that they really want us to figure out a way to bring back and embed both the parents and students. It's, it's a real challenging issue. It's a challenging issue for us. I think, I think around my family table. Our new resolution is to spend less time on the internet, less time on social media and less time on the phones. So, but I know that we, we deal with an inordinate amount of internet, social media issues that percolate back into the school. And so to the degree that we continue to work with families and students to support. Safe habits. And set guardrails for, for kids around internet use and access, I think the better. The good news is that Tim is planning on bringing back some internet safety curriculum and resources, but that's, that's exciting. And I offered up Lennox School, the site for South County convening. And I encourage that to happen. So hopefully we'll come back from him and actually his community outreach person is Julius Warren, worked in Pittsfield. So I know her intimately through my work and. This is also the time of year to remind students who are seniors. To get those scholarship applications done. There's a lot of free money out there. And I know I had a really ask my two children last year to write those essays and get those applications in, but please do not leave money on the table. I got a, we got a new scholarship that came in that's been perking around the county for a while, but I'm not sure that Lennox has participated in it. Called a Chang Chapkin Scholar and it's. It's intended to really support, you know, first gen. You know, economically challenged families and they actually contribute fifteen thousand, up to fifteen thousand dollars a year for four years. An amazing scholarship. So please don't. Again, parents, students, don't hesitate to reach out to guidance. I know guidance is pushing a lot of information right now in scholarships and. Want to encourage students who really follow those out.
Man, interrupt and introduce to that having sat on the virtual iconic Scholarship Foundation judging committee at some point. What we found is that students who graduated and have scholarships that are available for renewal. Don't often apply for that. So if you have older out there in the universe, students who have graduated, suggest that they look to us. It's not, sometimes you're not just the one.
Yeah.
I said that to my own graduate.
Right.
Got scholarships, start first year, but get out there and look, right?
I think my wife is writing down a calendar, make sure that Alison Eva bring up their scholarship. So. In addition to that, guidance push that information by virtue of leadership program. Which is sponsored by One Berkers, an excellent program and also dual enrollment courses that are available for NCLA and DPT. Wanted to thank the middle and high school for rallying around the prevention of the settlement survey. That this county has been doing for well over a decade and excellent. Data that we collect from. All the school districts and all the students across virtual county with really much originally by the virtue United Way. And I appreciate that. We weren't quite on it prior breaks, but they rallied and we got that survey done. And I want to thank everyone for their patience and making that all occur. I was able to meet with. Bob and Veronica in planning for the meeting tonight. And I really appreciate their feedback and. And their collaboration on agenda setting. But one of the things we discussed was also getting a student representative. To the table up here and we agreed that we're going to work with the high schools for the balance of issue to identify someone. From student government to have a seat at the table and we're excited about that. But there is actually a statute that governs student advisory. Awards that we'll make sure as we progress through the year and we invite our interim principal to support that process. And we get towards the gym and we get that advisory group in place. Then ideally a representative from that group. Sit at the table for the coming years. So we'll make sure that position, I think, getting student voice for the school committee table is really important. And I guess my last comment. Well, I'll say it quick. Is that we had a really good power school day. And we don't always say that. What I hear, but I walked into some challenges around power school and it was, I appreciate what Mark did to get the ball rolling. But we've really get with Melissa, Tim. Support some powerful expertise on both virtual support and stay onsite. And so we're really happy to our report that we believe we've got the course catalog and the GPA issue fixed. And then we've also got quite a bit of the state reporting glitches that we were really working through fix. So. I'm happy to say that the investment in time and the patience in any new system. Is one of those things that just requires folks to roll their sleeves and stay at it. So I appreciate that. We did find out, we talked a little bit later about school choice, that there is a little discrepancy in the enrollment numbers that I bumped into as I was doing the choice report. And we are working with the Department of Education to make sure that that gets resolved. So if you go on the website right now, you go to the portal for the, the accessible public. Dashboard for DESI and I tell you that our enrollment is about seven hundred and seventy kids, it's closer to seven eighty and change. And I'll report that tonight. And so most of that was really just a little bit of a power school translation problem. But we want to make sure to get full credit for every single student who's in our system. And so we're working, we reach out to DESI and make sure that gets. Fix for our next update. And there will be no ramification in terms of appropriate count. Or getting the dollars that were owed on school choice and through chapter seventy. So that's basically the update and hopefully that helps you and bring you up to speed with things that are happening on my desk on days. Thank you. Of course, I'll entertain any questions to be having.
Nordic school, Nordic, very pleasant.
Thanks. Before I get started, I want to thank Jeremiah for stepping up. Working with us this year as a teacher. Really appreciate that. No, he's a ski driver. And now I feel better. I got him out of driving today. Yes, we, we missed the like last trip from last couple of years. It's been metal with, with trying to get trips going. And so. With the group that we have this year, a young group. And. New ruling from, from MIAA that we are allowed to now work with seniors until the end of. The winter season. I saw an opportunity, a window where we might be able to pull in kind of a small trip. I had to reach out to a couple of parents because so many people are taking advantage of going on trips now. I didn't have any of the other coaches to help. So Chris Ketchum and Michael Ward. Parents have stepped up and said they, they'd be interested and we've got. About thirteen kids that are interested and we're looking to take a couple of the days. For an overnight of two, like classic and pretty much the same routine we've done for years. We're going to stay at the same place. It's a hostel. We ran out of all the bunk beds in the basement. So there, there aren't any other individuals. In, in the area. So we'll also, because it's such a small group, Mike Ward and I will be staying right at the hostel with him. Chris is going to bring his family up. So at night we're going to see if we can allow him a little freedom to spend with his wife and daughter. And the kids will stay right there. We'll go to Mount Pet Hovenberg. For skiing, which is right up the road and. There's a cooking right there and maybe go into town, have experienced Olympic Village. And usually like that, do some skating after all day skiing. I don't know how to get the energy for that, but. Look at that and. It was. One other request that I didn't put in to my letter to, to school committee was. We had been discussing the opportunity was the van and I, I think. Technically, I, I need to get your permission as well. Things look like we could use the school van. So we don't need to take up two vehicles. One vehicle would be taking the trailer with the skis and, and clothes and things and then. Take the van and I would drive that and Mike Ward would drive my car, I imagine, because it has trellis. Is. The expenses on the skiers. It's approximately two hundred and twenty, two twenty five, depending on the final number of kids. And that will take care of everything, food, skiing, gas, lodging. Yes.
Okay, so we need a census that state with the motion. To approve the cross country scheme. Team trip to Lake Placid.
I'm happy to move to approve the cross country proposed. Ski trip for the North Sea team to Red Placid. Starting right.
Any further questions?
I think I already put noted here, you mentioned that booster club has funds to help support kids who can afford the cost.
Yes, yeah, I put that in there. Absolutely.
And say it for the record.
Thank you.
I'm also pleased to see the notices coming out from. From David Q that he's been really pushing for Walker Fund contributions. So that's. So before we go, I just, this is just a. A question, not related to the vote per se, but. Is there a site where we can actually see how the ski is done? You know, I like to look at all the ski is not just the ones we show in the newspaper.
They used to use. Faster skier is, is a, is an online publication. And they don't post it there anymore and they send it to the coaches. Possibly what we could do is put it, get our athletic director to kind of put them up on our site.
Yeah, that'll be great.
Yeah, yeah, I'll talk to Maggie about that and see if there's a way. That we could, we could post that and get the last results up. We did for quite a young team. We lost a lot of skiers for various reasons. And it's kind of a big hole from the COVID years in, in our participation. We came in second in both races this year. That's with using that top end group to Yale and Middlebury and. So yeah, and we have our first college skier in quite a few years too. Grace Elliott is skiing in Fort Worth, which is really exciting. Yeah, so that's kind of awesome. So we'll work on, on getting that and having an easy link.
Yeah, that'd be great because I like to watch, see like all the young skiers now doing.
Yeah. Oh, it's fantastic. We got a great young group too. Quick question for you. Have you been keeping up the records?
Oh, yeah.
Can you send me, can you send me an email with most recent, we put them on the stairway going up into the barn and. Three, thirty years, forty, forty years. Well, thank you very much.
Okay, we haven't voted yet.
Oh.
Thanks.
Sorry.
Anything for the questions? All in favor?
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Appreciate it.
A lot.
Yes.
I, I don't like to vote for snow, but I know you mean that.
You know, we went to Lake Placid.
Please with the, please with the outside spirit.
Oh, great. So I put together a choice memo for the committee. And I often write this sort of thing because it's really useful to me. So if, if it's not useful to anyone else, it at least is doing something for me and helping me to understand. How this district is approaching particular topic. In this case, school choice. So the memo is designed for the net tonight and that is a vote. To a, continue to participate in choice and B, establish choice openings. So that we can begin to, you know, follow up on that. So the memo basically includes, I'm not going to go through the entire thing, but it includes your policies, key dates. I did on page, the second page of the memo, just give you a little bit of a historical look back. I'm assuming that most of you have a sense of where you've been. From the perspective of choice over the last fifteen, twenty years. But it gives you at least a general idea of a, how many kids are pressing into Lennox, how many are pushing out and sort of what the. What the delta is between those two clearly letting the significant choice receiving district and. This year, although the numbers are not published yet. We've got preliminary numbers that we're going to be at around three hundred and thirteen students choicing in, well, sending thirty five out. And that will be the highest total number of choice students in the, in the history of the district. And that's certainly great news because it's helping really to maintain a very robust enrollment for the district. You all have guidelines, not a policy, not a set rule, but guidelines that. You all follow and. Amy is just amazing at keeping track of all this and helping me to understand. I appreciate the table she put together. And so today, and so that the guidelines basically are obviously that total enrollment exceed forty percent choice and any given grade level. Doesn't exceed fifty percent. So the table that Amy provided to you and it was in the memo, probably easily, more easily viewed through her link. Gives you a sense of what we're looking at next year for enrollment. And it's a very simplistic view in that we take all the students we're currently enrolled in the advanced in a year. And then we start to make some projections around what we think is going to happen in terms of kindergarten.
I have a question about that table.
Please.
If I look at the kindergarten layer on that table.
Yeah.
Can I carry it over to twenty three, twenty four? It almost looks like, I'm not sure how to read the twenty two, twenty four. It looks like to me that twenty two, twenty four needs to be indexed down.
It was twenty three. So. The. The first column, first set of columns. Resident choice situation are twenty two, twenty three numbers advanced in grade for twenty three, twenty four. So the current kindergarteners of this year are reflected in grade one for next year, although the, it's. Current twenty two, twenty three students, they're moved to the next grade in that table. So kindergarten is totally an estimate. At this point.
So in kindergarten, you actually.
So first grade in twenty three, twenty four is fifty six.
Yes, that's what we get a total of the thirty six and twenty that are currently in grade.
But currently kindergarten, we have, no, thirty, no, thirty six and twenty is in first grade right now.
Yes, this is, this is advanced degree. So these are the kindergarteners in twenty two, twenty three.
Okay, so you're already. Twenty twenty three, forty.
So it's twenty two, twenty three moment in chance for the next grade level.
Okay, it took me a little bit.
And then things that we know, if I know a resident or a choice, if a resident is moving in or moving out. Or if we're losing a choice person, they're reflected there now, have that information now. And for that, yes, it's a total. Of what it would look like today with no changes and then we are five, where we think we might have a new specialize.
So just to make sure I got this right now. So grade one in twenty two, twenty three is actually kindergarten in twenty two, twenty three.
Yes.
Or yes, okay.
That's correct. So I'll just, I'll just highlight a couple of spots on here. We're recommending three places that you would open choice kindergarten, grade six and grade nine. And for two reasons. One is that those are typical onboarding spots for. Students who are joining a district either at the start of elementary school, middle school or high school. And that's, that's not atypical. That's, that's pretty typical across most districts that receive. Choice students that are tending to happen in, in the transition years. The second is that obviously kindergarten is a complete wild card. We know we have twenty five. Resident students. So we're setting a level at twenty to try to create a reasonable cohort for that particular grade level. Certainly it could be once registrations come in that we have more resident students than twenty five. And if that occurred, I think with twenty choice opening, we still would be within sort of a reasonable. Level or what is typical at more as just three class sections. So currently, if we took the twenty five out of the twenty, we're forty five, which is fifteen. Per class section, which is a very nice class size. If we picked up another five. Resident students, we still would be in a fairly realistic, you know, sixteen, seventeen kids per, per class. So recommending twenty for that particular grade level. You know, when you, when you look at your, your guidelines, you're only always going to be constrained by your resident enrollment, right? So it becomes kind of a limiting factor. And so grade six is a great example of that. Where you have a fairly small resident cohort at twenty seven. And so even though we're pushing, we would be pushing with these additional four choice students. Over the fifty two percent. Choice level that we, we said as a guideline, it's a relatively small cohort. If that makes sense. So even with the choice come, it's coming in, it still is, will be one of the smaller grade level that you have. In the middle, high school. And then additionally, we thought that there was a little bit of space available. In the ninth grade, as Amy says, that is tend to be a place where families like to onboard into Lennox. And so we thought to open a few spaces and just stay out with the fifty percent rule, forty nine percent made sense. So there are three places based on this projection where you would be over fifty percent. And that's grade four, grade six. And grade eleven. But again, if you look at grade eleven, the resident cohort is really small. And so it creates a little bit of a challenge there. And then your district total is over forty percent. You know, again, that will vary a bit depending on how many resident choice kids sort of shake out between now and the start of next year, but. You know, the good news is that your enrollment is, is going to be projected at with pre K somewhere around seven hundred and seventy six kids and. I have the number now at seven eighty one. We've maintained a fairly robust enrollment based on where it is this year. Just kind of a final note, and I made a couple of points in here and that's sort of considerations. One is that, you know, my analysis of your foundation in the moment is that it looks like it's on a slight decline. But it has bounced around a little bit and your strategic, you know, your strategic planning committee looked at enrollment pretty aggressively or that's part of an important. You all did a nice job on that, but, or, you know. Yeah, but right now, I mean, your, your foundation enrollment is, you know, it looks like you dropped about twenty students. And so that will be a limiting factor. Again, if you stick to the guidelines around the forty percent, fifty percent. So it's just something to think about and something to watch carefully if you're projecting for foundation enrollment. And for people who don't know what foundation enrollment is, the number of students reside in your town. The good news, of course, is that kids who reside in a town can choose to go to the public school, or they can choose the choice out, or they can choose to go to private or homeschool. You all maintain around eighty percent, eighty six percent retention the last couple of years. And that's, that's a very strong retention. So I think that's, that's good news. So yeah, that's kind of where we're at. I think the motions that we're looking for tonight. And you know, Bob and Veronica had talked about this, you actually don't have to vote annually to. Continue to participate in school choice, but I just think it's a good exercise. To make that commitment publicly that you're going to continue forward on the pathway. And then the second motion is one that we imperfectly crafted. So I'm, I'm open to suggestions around the second motion. And that is the idea that we, we opening a choice seats in kindergarten, grade six, grade nine. I did put seat targets in there, but I also wanted some flexibility for the committee to authorize the superintendent, whether it's me or. Whoever you hire permanently to have some wiggle space in that, in that, you know, decision around. If one or two students up or down, they don't have to come back full committee. If there's a significant change. I would expect either I or the incoming superintendent would absolutely lead right now back to the committee. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I suspect you all know much about this topic that I do. Oh, maybe more.
Yeah, I, I do one question and I apologize if I missed it in your explanation. It, it, it pertains to grade six. Why, why are we going to? Four choice as opposed to two? Why are we going over the fifty percent? In, in that case, you know, when I, when I look at, and the reason is, is I'm contrasting it with grade nine. And there we're, we're keeping.
And there we're, we're keeping it. At the fifty, so it was and and I do have a different question, but I just kind of. Kind of curious what the reasoning may may be.
Yeah, I know. That's a good question. It's, it's a little arbitrary, to be honest with you, but um. I think one, the feeling was that. Um twenty seven is a starting point for resident enrollment was a small cohort. And so um if you look at the other resident cohorts in grade seven, um you have to really. Work my glasses here. It's thirty six students in seven, eight, thirty nine and eight, thirty five and nine. That's kind of significantly smaller than your resident population. So. You're, you're always going to be limited by. Theoretically, according to your guidelines, uh not exceeding your resident enrollment, right? Um. So I guess in this case. I know Amy, we kind of.
It's class size and um it's such a very important entry point into the district. Um that. If we felt it was important in sixth grade and to increase that class size a little bit.
Do you do you, David, do you look at the column for strategic plan? Optimally, like sixty five and then.
Right.
We can't get there because we don't have presidents.
Right.
We're pushing the top end. Do, do we know that's always traditional in the day? It can be an unfair question. If that grade going through is always traditional. In which.
Yeah.
Meaning sixth grade or that group coming up.
That cohort, whatever, you know, that, 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 that group.
Yes, it's been.
As I was.
Yeah, but because the class sizes are smaller at Morris. Um, you could have less than fifty percent.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
To get to a good size number at Morris, you didn't need extra choice.
Yeah.
So if you could go backwards and look at what we're projecting for next year, I mean, your first grade cohort is solid at thirty six, but then you got second, third, or.
Right.
That are smaller cohorts at twenty six, then you bump up to thirty six and grade five, you know?
Yeah.
So I think, you know, the idea, and 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 again, I haven't been around the table. You've been having discussions with the idea you want a robust high school program where you can. Run your teams, have your activities, have a range of courses and and options and that educationally this one.
Um, my, my, my other question actually. Uh pertaining to uh kids sending, where we're the sending district. Um are, do, do we have a sense? Of a break? Is it possible to have a sense of breakdown of? Um what grades coincide to that?
Yeah, I can, we can give you exactly.
I, I just wonder if there's a value in understanding if we see any trends, if it's.
We, the schools that are sending the.
No, we're sending.
We send the first graders, is there, I was thinking, you know, over the course of those. Um, I, I, I don't know what it may or may not tell us, but if it's available under. They just be worth all taking a peek at.
So we're right now putting um a sending, receiving report together required by the Department of Education. It looks at. Um where all the resident students and Lennox ultimately um are educated. And so it'll give us a sense of whether in private, broke field, homeschool, and then where they go um into choice that. And you can actually look at that by grade. I can, I can certainly run a report and bring it back.
It would just be a snapshot of this year. You wouldn't know when those ninth graders left. They may have left the first grade, they may have left.
Yeah.
We give you a snapshot of the current.
Yeah, that would be, I even have history, I don't think. I'm just kind of curious, yes.
Does, I have a question regarding grade nine. So grade nine and the current graders. Right.
Right.
Um, I know that's been graded. Has had some challenges. From something we've read, and I'm wondering if. If, even though that is an entry point, whether. Want to increasing the size of that grade. I think that may be a discussion to have with the principals. More specifically um about the nature. Class. Whether or not to keep it rolling or whether.
Yeah, and I agree. I think this is an important question, but I think it's also interesting to think in the sense of. One of the challenges, it's one of many, and we're, we're also one of the benefits of a small school. And I've heard it from anecdotally and also read a lot about. Cohorts. So even if a grade is challenged, having a, a new. Group of students coming in could actually provide opportunity for peer group and. In other words, challenges of a certain grade about maybe certain kids were struggling with actions, behaviors, whatever, whatever may be due to. Bringing more students in, I don't think necessarily tells us. There, there may be a lot of other information we want to hear from leadership, but necessarily tells us because some of the struggles I think that kids certainly talk about is. I, I don't really have my people, like my whole class is all this kind of kid or that kind of kid. And what we hope for is an inclusive. Education where our kids are relating to each other. In celebrating differences, but that's part of the challenge we're working on in a number of different ways. So I, I think I. Think I have to be careful about like fewer is better because there's challenges, especially when we're thinking about. Middle to high school grades. It's not necessarily that fewer is better. The way we might look at kindergarten where we have a lot of that teacher time on kind of learning, but we get to the middle of high school, we're also thinking about. Social, emotional interrelatedness, kids getting involved in activities and having peer groups. So. It's, I'm, I'm interested to hear about it, but to me, there's like multiple sides to that. I don't know.
Well, I was just thinking that's the largest class we have already. Um.
Yes.
And to.
Yeah, I, I had a more just sort of. Size related question about grade nine, just that, given that it is already the largest. Adding to it, I, I think you can kind of see in the total filled column creates a pretty sizable bubble. Passing through the system. I mean, it'll be ten kids larger than. Oh, give or take, you know, any of the grades on either side of it. Um, and so. I guess I just, I, I'm not sure what the, I'd be curious what the affirmative case is for. Increasing what is a sixty five. Student with forty five percent choice cohort.
Mm hmm.
And, and I think that, you know, what comes up is that those six and nine are are a big entry point, but we have the biggest numbers of applications coming up.
That's right, but we already have, we already have thirty choice in that cohort. So relative to everything else, I'm just not. I, I guess it would be a question for Jake and Amy sort of. Why, why would we want that number to be more than zero?
I did have a conversation with the chair of the guidance department about overall numbers and this, he said seventy two.
No, I, I agree.
Specific to this grade or this cohort. Um, but I asked him, you know. We're trying to do this, you know, in the absence of a. When I come home, I'm just getting speed back and he said he had classes of seventy two.
No, I, and, and I don't mean to say that it's necessarily an issue. I think if definitely it's seventy two in every. Grade, that could be terrific, but sixty seven isn't an issue either necessarily. So I guess. My question is, if kind of the baseline is we have a well balanced, already largest in the entire. K twelve system cohort. At forty five percent choice. What if someone were saying, here is why we do want to add sure right now, why, why would that be?
No, and I, I really think ultimately it's um. The discretion of the committee. Um, and you know, where you want to be, you could decide accept all ten. Um, you could make it a zero. You know, it's kind of virtue. We, we did make it a zero. We could be in the lockers and in the high school. Yeah, we were kind of constrained by that, but um. So yeah, I, I need to Bob's point, we, we also looked at the pattern of where the applications are right now. Where you're likely to onboard, but you could certainly make the argument that you're fall. In grade nine, uh and that you could, uh you could just make a decision not to accept these graders.
Well. Oh, and kind of the flip side, I'm wondering if we consider. Allowing um students into grades seven and. Eleven, at least if I'm interpreting this correctly, looks like we have applications. And those classes are both under the the optimal size. That we determined in the strategic plan. So I, I mean, I. I, I'm, I'm trying to remember here, but if somebody can correct me, I feel like we went. Um. Students in that other grade points, six, nine. Primarily when they've been a low class size and a low choice percentage. Um is primarily when we look to other grade levels. If, you know, and I did, I, yeah, well, if there's the percent, this percent choice for both of those grades is on the higher side, but. Well, seventh grade is fairly low, but eleventh grade is high.
That's seven, I think the other drawback is we then, we then push well past that forty percent line.
That's right. Yes.
Right, I was gonna say seventh grade, yeah, uh, but we shouldn't look at a forty three percent number as low, forty three percent number is, has to be above average. For the system as long as we, as long as the forty percent. Um. Target is in place.
I mean, one of the arguments I just would offer is that I do believe that there's. Um, you know, this comes back to Barack's point around kids coming together and sort of interacting with each other and building connections and relationships. And I do believe that. The transition points are really important points in an educational career and journey. And to the degree that we can onboard students as they start this new experience, I think. Um will help them and others just to become part of a group where they really sort of travel through their education together. I think there's something to be said for that. And so that really is six and nine grade.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah, well, and, and again, I think if this were, if this were a cohort that we thought we ever were going to want to add to.
Right.
Then ninth grade is obviously the time to do it. For me, it's. It's probably looking at the specific cohort. If we have a thirty five, thirty cohort already. Is that one we would want to typically add to? By itself.
Right.
But then also I think it's really important looking at what's coming behind it. Our class size is going to be getting smaller. I mean, one of the nice things about cohorts is we can look. Eight, ten years down the road and say, you know, virtually every class. And then we'll make, have to make decisions about choice for all of them as they come through. But. The classes are going to be getting smaller over the next decade, just. As these larger classes leave and the smaller classes come in. And so. I don't, I don't know what the right metaphor for the, the stretching of the balloon or the, the stretching of the, the snake or the sausage. Whatever your preferred pipeline, whatever your preferred pipeline is. Um, but stretching it further when we know what is coming behind it is going to be lower. Um. I worry just sends us in the wrong direction.
I don't know, it's kind of something, and it surely we have class size that have differed. Or. It's a matter of ten shoes. It's just, it's hard to conceive of how we. And I don't know the answers to this, but how we can't kind of handle that.
I, again, I am, I'm just supposed to, anyway, it's not that we can't handle it. It's that it's not, it's. Those kids, and they're not even kids, they're just a, a probability in a pile of applications right now are not Lennox students. And. The question is. Is. At the margin, is Lennox looking to add students there right now? Um. And you know, that it's also one that's already well above the, the forty percent. So while we. We can do it. The question is still. Why should, it's a can versus a should. I have no doubt we can do it, but they, we deliver a great educational experience to them. That everything would be fine, but this is the one moment when we decide either we should do it or we shouldn't do it. And I still haven't heard a, a, a should argument for why we would want that cohort to become. A seventy two rather than a sixty seven.
Well, I guess what we do is we, we want to take the vote. To participate at the one vote and get second vote and be which, which grade votes. Uh we must pay out openings and. Uh I can, uh Jake has a post war.
I think we've typically voted on. The choice size.
Yeah, I mean, it used to be. It used to be, it had to be. That used to be you had to vote, you know, just make that a change to be get a vote to warn at this rate. Um, I mean.
And I, and I wanted to just look, think about it as you read my mind, Bob, because I think that I want to, I want us to be in that like. Right zone of setting policy, which we have done relative to general guidelines. But then ensuring that our administrative team or superintendent and staff have the ability to make. The decision that they need to make without. Too much micromanaging from us. The argument I suppose could be made that if we set a general guideline. Forty percent overall and no more than fifty percent in any given class. Who has the final say on whether we go outside of that guideline without making? The purpose of my.
Well, we've talked about that years ago, you know, and.
Try to bound, yeah, to give that, to continue to honor the superintendent's role in making that final decision and keeping within that reasonable guideline. For us to be able to. Setting sort of as policy, I guess.
I think that's what I, I agree with. Yes, maybe the school, the school committee is perfect, should be at a high level. Which we can do, I think we. I'm trying to put forward the motion, so. Yeah, I don't know why I'm actually. So it's the action one is. I'm telling you. And so it's.
Well, sorry, I just had one other question before we move into motions, just on the kindergarten. Do we know, is the twenty five sort of a placeholder? Do we have reason to believe? That, what, what goes into? Putting that number there?
Managing.
Sure.
At this time, it's an estimate based on average kindergarten resident. Over the past three years, it's totally a possibility.
Okay.
It's not based on birthday now, or people coming in the office or in my.
So it's not, as already mentioned, yeah.
Yeah, I knew we'd be doing a lot of work.
Well, when you go, when you jump ten in the prior year, it's.
Okay.
Listen, we want to have resident.
It kind of, and that twenty five number for kindergarten.
What is the capacity, total enrollment capacity kindergarten? Do, do we know that?
Optimal.
The strategic, yes.
Optimal. So.
That's, that's a principle I try to.
Right.
Keep it to. Forty eight to fifty one and give a little bit of room to those people might move in the summer or you just don't know about, not, not fill it up to fifty four. Early in the year before you have a chance to enroll people in the summer or whatever. I'm seventeen in classes. What I used to shoot for, even though. The guideline of fifty four is. You know, that. Out of that.
Yeah, and I, and so that, that's sort of what the. The interest for, for that question is just in terms of timeline and, and when who has to decide what. Um, I think one thing I seem very curious about is whether with thirty six this past year. It's just an interesting blip or is a reflection of a post COVID. Um shift in population of young people. Or families with children coming into the schools. Um, in the community. And so. I don't, there's sort of like a who's first question, but if there's an option to. You know, we certainly know we're going to need or want ten to fifteen choice kids. Start with that, get information in April, I think it is about what kindergarten actually does, and then potentially add. Additional from mayor. I just worry if this is unlikely, but if the trend is actually twenty six, two years ago, thirty six last year. Thirty nine. This year, and we've already let in twenty choice kids, we will, we will regret having done.
But. Yes, the choice numbers would be revised once they're done with the actual investment. We wouldn't let choice same for, you know.
So we don't make any choice decision before we know. When do we, when do we just?
For kindergarten, just because kindergarten is that, right? It was just kindergarten.
Yes.
Okay.
So in other words, families can register. Then families can sign up and say, we, you'd like to be interested as school choice. Well, actually, first. People can sign up and ask to be considered for school choice. Be put on a waiting list. Meanwhile, families will register. Is that about how it works? Just some people out there that might be wondering.
Can I push on a spot for a second? Are you sure? Just to maybe help us understand the kindergarten registration process and then we'll have a good handle of what the resident. Um. You know.
So registration begins March first.
Mm hmm.
Um. But it. Can trickle in. Over the summer, so that's. That's like the catch twenty two. Um. We have. Another new student who was registered who will begin Morris again this week. So I, I've just seen an increase. In general. At Morris over the last eighteen months, which is great. People are. Choosing to move into Lennox and, and come to the, the local elementary school. So. And this is where I might need to refer to Amy. I don't know when kindergarten choice. Needs, the final decision needs to be made because. Needs, the final decision needs to be made because sometimes there are last minute people who register at the last minute. So that's. That's where it gets sticky.
Yeah, no, that's super helpful. And I, I mean, and and I don't think we have to know the exact number. I think it, you know, over the course of March. What comes in there and we can compare to last March will give us.
And I just, I just wanna say, and I know you might have this information, but there is a a really robust. Three K exit. Um, so that's that number sits at, I think, seventeen.
Yes.
Um, that is moving in to kindergarten minus the fact that anybody could obviously choose a different case spot.
Sure.
But it is a, it is quite a big, you know, transition compared to some other years. Um, of kids moving out of that that we actually already are. Um, so there's a likelihood there. I I would correlate it a higher likelihood that we went on seventeen-ish. Kids more than we would maybe if if it was just a gamble. Um, because we already have them, they've got exposure to us, they've been in our school system already. Um, it's it's an easier way to hold kids. Um, so I would anticipate anyway, so that's a good starting sort of number. Um, of kids that we know hopefully is fairly stable. Uh, before you even say anything else about the other residents coming today.
And those are, those seventeen are all Lennox residents because they have other that to anyone outside of the registry. So unless they were choosing a different. School. We at least have seventeen, is what you're saying, right?
Right.
So. Okay, so, um.
Yes. On the motion, um, I believe that the Lennox Public Schools approved continued participation and inter-district. Full choice for Matt General Law, Chapter Seventy-Six, Section Twelve B.
I'll say that.
We're just saying. On favor. We wanna have a motion to. And if you have this motion already written out, right?
Mm-hmm.
So the motion is essentially going to be that we'll be accepting students in kindergarten. Six and nine, that's what we choose to have in motion, um, with some flexibility, with some intended to. And students accept another raise as. It's. I'm not sure what the answer is.
Can I add a motion, Brian? Can I make a, I I'm going to make a motion. Meant in a friendly and cooperative way to table that. Um, because I think it sounds like we still have some more information. I don't want to delve too much into micromanaging. What our superintendent is so wonderfully presented to us, but if we could table that portion of it, so my motion is to table.
Well, we don't.
We don't table.
Okay, well, my suggestion is that we prefer, that we don't table it, but that we actually table the issue to get some more information. And get a sense of. What we're thinking about that sixth and ninth grade. I think there's been a lot of good discussion and. Maybe some more conversation to go back to our leadership team to think about that. I hate to have us agree to a larger number and then reduce it. I'd rather see us. Move forward with a lesser number so families can make their plans. Um, I know this also does impact families with siblings, you know, they're trying to get into the school. So. It's it's an, it's a, can become an emotional issue, but I think maybe more information and thinking about that ninth grade. And maybe that's a straight.
Well, it's kind of, I mean, just saying, I don't know if we ever want to do. Because I, I don't know if we ever want to do that.
Right.
Before we just leave it as, oh, that's possible.
Nice question.
Well, the fact, yeah, that's the people talking about.
The plan or Jesse's plan.
To. It's in your policy too.
Yeah.
To to say how many openings are.
Yeah.
To identify grades were taken.
Grades.
Taken, chosen. And is it, is there a date specific on that?
Well, in your policy, I believe it now. Um, yeah, what's.
Yeah, no, I thought it was, I thought it was either December thirty-first.
Patients come in.
Deadlines until five is January thirty-first, I think, with random draws, etc. So that people can know.
Right, but.
So they can march. They need to make a.
What I was wondering, I, I thought we had a.
Yeah.
Um, requirement from the state that. We we vote on what what grades are open choice.
I think that is June first, actually. Which is.
A little way off.
It's really.
Okay.
I think your policy suggests earlier. And that, because you have deadlines on the application, and you've probably had a lot of previous committee discussions around. Also allowing families to make decisions, you know, and. Because I know our office will start to get a lot of calls and, you know, are we in or not?
Right.
But that doesn't mean we should rush. We should be thoughtful about it, and I think make.
Well, we have two more, we have two more meetings in January. I think we should definitely make that decision by the. We're not.
You, you know, can can we satisfy the requirement by having a motion? Where we, as it kind of states here, anticipate choice seats for those grades. Um. Uh, with without citing specific numbers at this time. And then, um, and and then incorporate the 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 last line of the motion. Um, and in the past, we've handled it if there was going to be a. We tended to handle it. Where there was a, by, excuse me, by incorporating our guidelines in the in in the first part of the, um. Uh, sorry, in the second motion. And and then we often handled it like we did during COVID. Uh, as an exception, as an exception basis. And I may be making it too complicated. But if that satisfies our requirement by giving our anticipated gradients. Then, um, that then could the actual specifics follow?
Yeah, I mean.
Or is there any point in doing that?
Right, yeah, I guess the question is, is what more we know by the end of this month. Um, and probably the only more that you'll know is maybe since we've done adventing on their thoughts. Um, although with Jeremiah coming in, it's going to be a steep curve, learning curve to understand that it might give. At least the two schools, well, basically the one school. To give us some feedback on particularly that grade nine. Um, cohort, which I think is what I heard, I think I heard the most.
Yeah.
I'm happy to bring that.
Well, so would be, i- if we were to just do a vote right now to say to open to limit choice, new choice enrollment to kindergarten sixth and ninth. Right, this coming year. That would still, I think everyone's point will allow for continued iterative discussion about what exactly those numbers should be. Um, and it would provide a lot of useful information to people who are not in. Kindergarten, I mean, there are other applications out there. I think to the extent we all agree, there will be auditions in those places. That would be helpful to them now. So, so. Um, I think it makes sense to say kindergarten, sixth and ninth are the. Are the ones that would be open for potential choice slots and then understand that. There will be continued discussion about what that number should be, but again, at the day, that is the administration's decision.
So what I see in our policy book, and maybe I don't have the right version, but J F E D. Says on before January first, every school in the administration will turn the number spaces in each grade in school available to students.
That's. That we'll bring, that, yeah, that's what we have here.
Right, but I don't have to vote on that. It's not an administrative decision.
I don't think it says it in our policy, but I think there is a. Jesse's plan.
I don't.
Yeah.
I don't know about that.
I I could find a citation and bring it to the next meeting. It sounds to me like, um, that would be useful, but I I would, um, not that I.
I'll say it first, and that's better. The order, it made people waiting for that, so they could buy services.
Yeah, I think what the, what Jesse's super centered into is the process. But they want a process that's, um. That's fair. And that, um, is not, um. Well, how do I, how do we describe it in a way? It's not discriminatory in any way, meaning that it's an open and random process. In which a committee is identifying. Um, available slots, and then if more applicants are applying for the slot and are available. They have a random process to then select the students for acceptance. And then they typically have a second round, which as you go deeper into the year. Um, if it turns out that your resident enrollment is changing, your total enrollment is changing, you can have a second lottery and if and when. Um, the spaces are available. So I think what Jesse is most fixated on is. Sort of the, um, the integrity of the process. Um, because you you could, um, you know, the district can certainly game this a bit. I carefully accepting students at the right moments in time. And the idea is that Jesse, I think, wants committees to be. Um, you know, very sort of transparent and explicit around how we're doing that. Makes sense. They've even taken out and written some briefs on. Just even the inability to look at anything related to the student, um, and as part of the screen process. Hasn't been completely random. So just, it's food for thought. I mean, we we dealt with this a little, and maybe because when they came in and felt like their process was. Not as tight as it needed to be in in terms of if they were challenged, that they didn't really have a process for accepting at certain point. Determining slots and then having a lottery. It was kind of a rolling basis, which is really not, I think, how the department wants to deal, particularly when you have more applications and seats. Which you all do.
All right, should we go with Ronnie's suggestion then that we pick this up next time with a good understanding of what we do need?
I think so.
Right. But yeah, and thank you, Jake, for bringing this. I think historically, the committees at times tried to stay too far away from it. And I think, at least I know, I feel like last year I did not have a good sense of what was going on. And so whether we have to vote or not. It's, I think, useful for us to discuss it.
I mean, currently I have a motion. Um, that has not been voted on.
No, we don't.
No, we didn't make that motion. We didn't get that far.
So.
We voted on the motion to that point, yes. We voted all in favor of that. That was Christine's motion and my second. And then we didn't do a second motion.
And discussion.
Although I tabled it. Generally.
Okay, so we'll move to unfinished business. That you all say.
I'm good, yeah.
Thank you for that, though. I think everyone's. And I, no, well, it's always, I think it is always a little confusing, and I do want to say that I think. The rumor mill sometimes gets a hold of this because it does feel very emotional and people who recognize that families make decisions and they. You know, might probably forgot a little, so I think as transparent as possible. It's super important. Very.
Okay, so on the principal search, we, um, we had almost the two principal searches. We had the interim one. Dr. Ames. So that, thank you for being available and. We're both working with you.
Ready for selection.
Thank you.
Um, and. As far as full principal search goes, we had the application deadline is closed, we have nine applications, but we're not actually going to, um. Start the full process on that, um, by the time of February.
I think so. I think we'll probably assemble a committee, you know, prior to that break. Um, we have a committee identified, actually.
Yeah, the committee's been identified, right? And, uh, but, and we're gonna notify the nine applicants that we weren't. Yeah, not to worry that they hadn't heard anything from us, you know, because we weren't gonna move on right away.
Can I just ask, is there a reason not to have it open until we're ready to start? Should there be an application? No, applicants be interested?
I think, I think the answer to that is. Probably gonna be, the market established that as a deadline, not knowing. When we were gonna actually do it or we're talking with Jake. So, so, no, I mean, there's. There's no reason why we couldn't still be accepting applications, except that. The deadline has gone by, I mean, you know, he could, he could. Notify that we're extending it for further applications. I don't know what, how.
It was up for sixty days.
No, I I I would assume there aren't a lot of people who chose not to apply in November, but I would also suspect there are people who. In the coming two months, if if we really have sort of a couple of months before we're going to proceed. Um. Who might. Become interested in be initiating a search.
And would that be as simple as reposting and reopening it, we we go aside and ask as far as.
Uh, additional applications would be accepted. Uh, or something.
Yeah, I I'm not opposed to the idea. I just think it's gotta be handled carefully.
Right.
Because you have a candidate pool right now and. You could also, um, that could backfire and that those candidates might then say, oh. Is the pool not deep enough or are they not considering us as credible candidates? And so. Um, I feel like in some ways you got a really solid pool because the entire. Building was in blocks like no one knew. Within principal was going to be, and so there's probably no better time to apply for principal shit when. Um, folks feel like it's going to be a, the the, there's a real opening there, kind of inside. There's not someone who's, you know, inside, so. Um, I mean, I'm happy to, I'll follow the will of the committee.
No, and and if 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 everyone feels like we're in the right place, then then that certainly fine with me. I just raised it because it seemed like. There was an unplanned gap and so on.
Right, you write again, then yeah, we do have.
I have a question.
Well, and I guess, I'm sorry, I guess the just the footside would be, I'm not sure. Why we want to push it a couple, like, are we going to lose excellent candidates if we say? Thanks for the application and you probably applied elsewhere, but we're on pause for a couple of months.
Yeah, we'll have to re-balance.
We'll start seeing.
Yeah, I guess, so you want to rationalize why I'm pushing it back a bit. So I'm happy to do that. Um, one, one is obviously we're in the middle of a superintendent search, and I thought that that particular search needed. Everyone's primary attention. Um, and there's a little bit of, sort of, you you get to the the hiring, recruiting, interview fatigue. Level two with what the interim committee, which just went through. Um. The second point is that you are about to hire potentially a superintendent. Um, and to the degree that that incoming superintendent could be connected to the surge because. This, you know, you don't have a huge admin team here. And so your middle high school principal is one of a handful. That your superintendent's going to work directly with, and to the degree that person can have some role in the process. Um, I think would be useful. Um, so that was my rationalization for sort of pushing it back a bit. Um. And I I get a sense that probably the thirty days is not going to be a ideal breaker for. Uh, the candidates are in the pool. They're either serious about being in a pool. Um, and there's probably a few who aren't serious. There's a big chunk of us. Uh, I think that's folks' table for us.
And it aligns with the typical timing and process for hiring. Of a principal in general, we're not.
Yeah.
Waiting, we're not pushing it out.
Yeah.
March higher.
I mean, there's no, there's no. Rule necessarily, but I'd say that is the general pattern is that. Super settings, superintendent searches become early, best, right? There's somewhere between Thanksgiving and. You know, in that break where you all are at. A principal search is follow that next wave, and then your instructional teacher search is happening in the third wave, and that's typically how they travel. Um, so. But, you know, you all launch the process before I even come on board and. Um, I think you, my my personal opinion is based on the pool that I see out in front of you. I think it's solid.
Okay.
So we'll leave it on. At least my thing. Thank you.
Moving on, superintendent search.
Um, all right, superintendent search, we all have. Uh, some memo and some resumes in front of you from the superintendent search committee. Um, just want to start by acknowledging the members of the committee, and we always say nice things about committees, but this was a really extraordinary group that. I mean, even from showing up early for a meeting to staying after, it's just, they were incredibly engaged and dedicated. Um, and I think also did a very good job of both sharing their own perspectives, but. At all times pausing and saying, okay, but what have we heard from the community? But what is it that we really need? Um, and so that was Ronnie Benton and Megan Kelly from the, excuse me, Megan Kirby from the school committee. Um, also Lisa Poirier, Brandon Kelly, Christine Noble, Rihanna Patel, Big Pew, Tara Romeo, and Marta Sanmecca Dragonetti. Uh, as well as Liz LaFond, our M A S C rep, who has been indispensable in every step. Um, unfortunately, couldn't be here tonight, but will continue to be with us through, um, through the final interviews. So we we interviewed five candidates over three nights last week and ultimately. Decided unanimously in each case to advance three for consideration by the school committee. Speaking of myself, I think there are a terrific set of candidates and also a. A a a very interesting set that they each bring really distinct strengths and profile. So I think we'll have. A lot to think about and and enjoy getting to know them when they come next week. We had planned, Megan, Ronnie and I, to just sort of briefly say something about each of them. So you have a little bit of context. And then happy to to try to answer any questions, but I think to me, to the extent everyone gets to meet and speak with them yourself. The best way to learn about them. So the first is Dr. William Collins. He is an experienced superintendent who was superintendent of the Parishville-Hopkin Town District in upstate New York. For the last five years. It's right up on the border with Canada. And is is actually smaller than Lennox, about four hundred students. So roughly what Lennox would look like if we if we didn't have a robust choice program. He is very available for the very interesting reason that he had communicated well in advance to everyone there. That when his daughter died from high school, they were gonna take a year to sail. For his resume, this is his, he's done this twice earlier in his life, but he and his wife and his daughter. Who is taking a gap year are currently in the Florida Keys and will be making their ways back through the Bahamas and up to New England. So we we spoke to him from a a library in the Florida Keys that that was trying to close down and kick him out. But, you know, he was, he was a really impressive candidate. He, prior to being a superintendent, was a graduate educator. So helped to set up the program for superintendent and principal training at St. Lawrence University. And so has a lot of experience with both preparation of of educational leaders and particular development and recruitment in rural environments. And for that, he was, excuse me, he was principal of the elementary school in Southampton for about a decade. So I think we all enjoyed speaking with him. We're impressed with his focus on leadership. And sort of building school culture. And we are looking forward to having him here next Wednesday. So that's candidate number one. Number two, I'll cover for Megan, who unfortunately couldn't be here to speak out at the moment, but is Deanna LeBlanc. Was currently the director of curriculum at the Gateway Regional School District, so just a little bit east of here. She has been in that district for five years, crewed them as an assistant principal and then as the director of curriculum for the district. Previously was assistant principal for the elementary schools of Southern Berkshire. Regional School District for several years and before that began her career and was for many years a music teacher. She is especially engaged, I would say, on issues of curriculum and teaching. With just a tremendous amount of expertise. And in sort of working development alignment, working with teachers to develop and implement curriculum. And they have a tremendous amount of energy and focus on on those areas to the district. And she will be here next Wednesday as well. Ronnie, if you want to cover.
On Thursday, we'll hear from Dr. Kathleen Provost, who's currently the assistant superintendent in the Hudson Mass Public Schools. But she's progressive leadership, actually. She moved from teaching to being an academic leader, curriculum director. And then being assistant superintendent the last five years, since two thousand seventeen. She comes with very high recommendations from her existing superintendent that she's been working with and talks about. The excitement of our opportunity to come and live in the Berkshires and be in Lennox. She described herself as a leader. Who works with integrity to hold herself accountable to exactly these services. And now it comes with a core value of putting students first. She talked a lot about, you'll hear, you'll hear a lot more about. How she engages in leadership. She has had budget experience. Aligning direct district boards with the budgets, no base budgeting. As because it's a bigger, it's a bigger district of twenty one hundred students, three hundred staff. She's had the opportunity to be hands on with a number of different areas. That I think at least the community has expressed are important to us. So she'll get a chance to answer a lot of questions to the seven of us as well as have visits to our district on Thursday, which would be the night.
And and when we have the times for the first.
So on on Wednesday, I think we'll do five forty-five and seven fifteen and we have a five thirty meeting time. And then Thursday, can I start right at five thirty?
Okay, that's what I have in my calendar, but I just want to make sure.
Yes, yeah, so that's what they're scheduled.
Five forty-five and seven thirty.
Seven fifteen, I'll forward you those.
And and we'll post those and those are help things for.
Yes, and yeah, so the overview and the resumes will all be available on the on the school website. So tomorrow. Yeah, so I have a couple sort of process I initially did that to hit, but if anyone has any questions about the candidates.
Well, I want to just take this opportunity to thank you all for leading this process along with Ronnie and Megan. From the school committee as well as the people you mentioned who run the search committee. But I think it's, you know, and and Liz, who's watching, but, you know, she is a great resource for us.
Maybe one, one question. We had a discussion probably in December and provided a lot of feedback around the. Thoughts around residency requirement or how to frame that. Is that, but we'd like to kind of open ended.
Yeah. Yeah, so what we did was we sort of sent them an introductory note from me before the interview saying. We're really excited to meet them and that as part of their opening statement, we'd want them to address the question of why they're coming to Lennox and. The extent or to what extent they would be able to commit to moving to the area if they were coming out from outside of the Berkshires. And so. I can, I I guess I would say kind of brief overview, both Dr. Collins is sort of planning to. Leave upstate New York and and he is likely very interested in moving to this area. And likewise, Dr. Provost, who will be coming from Hudson, expressed a lot of enthusiasm for moving here. Ms. LeBlanc is closer already. She's about forty, forty-five minutes east of here. And currently has a commute of similar length. And so would be looking to stay where she is. But they're having to discuss that. All right, so a couple of next steps items. Just on logistics front, in terms of where we want to hold the interviews. We can certainly do them right here. We could also do them in the library where we held the. Preliminary interviews, especially if we anticipate there being a number of people who would want to come. And attend. I don't know if people have a preference or a sense of, everyone's just gonna be on Zoom anyway.
Well, we we do oftentimes get a route for these interviews. We did them downstairs, who should not be in grade at the time. I believe that's been rectified to some degree. I don't know what that would look like for the owl and that kind of stuff, but it would be, you know, but. The high school library is fine. We might strip. The the audience might be greater than, it might be, I don't know, that might be greater than. What we could get there.
We've, we've, we've done the cafeteria in Morris also. And 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 that in and of itself has had ample seating. Tables removed and chairs have.
Just make sure that everybody.
We want to be somewhere bigger than here. I mean, figure out where the right spot is.
We can ask for some tech support because I wanted to know that we actually had a.
Yeah.
You know, sometimes we kind of muddle along on our own, but it's possible to ask whether Randy or someone can be here to help us. I think that would be good because. Would be a little awkward to not be able to begin because we can't.
It's a definitely available, it's probably the most equipped for.
Or streaming.
Yeah, for streaming, but.
Well, it'd be hard to staging. It would be tricky. All right, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, and if you're in a school, though, they can adjust the temperature, so.
Yes.
Let them, we'll let them know.
Interviewing a progressively older group. Yeah, that's one of the requirements.
But with one comment about the library at the high school. I feel that that the setup we we've had now for our meetings, I I feel that true. Us all in one table, three on the side would perhaps not be the best arrangement. And just to keep that in mind.
I think that the the audience will be seeing it. You know, would probably like to see the person's face somehow. However, we we work at, we'd probably like to see. Maybe less so us, but works over candidate, but I don't know however that works.
Okay. It's clear that the owl's working. The owl would show while not to the people embarrassed.
We'll figure it out. We'll have a best in class interview set up, maybe in the round with. All right, second logistical question is just when we have folks visiting next week. So they'll be in town the day of their interview to meet with from schools. Typically, a piece of that is we'll probably schedule lunches for which it would be great to have members of the school committee. Dying to 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 answer questions, not ask questions. And so don't have to commit at the moment, but think about if you can be or want to be available. Either day and we'll put together some. Some lunch dates for folks.
And will those people in schools are out there or where do you?
We'll probably go out around town, yeah.
And what happens on the day we get two candidates?
We have two lunches. We'll worry if we want to have lunch twice, we can do them back to back.
So, mind you, would we have both candidates together the first day of the same lunch?
No, no, we'll, we'll split them up. So they'll have a calendar of meetings and. And conversations with folks and they'll want to talk to a lot of the same folks, but we'll do so individually.
Will, will, will. Will we have any consideration of. What we can and cannot talk to? Could it be construed as an informal interview process? With 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 them if we're having lunch prior to our.
Well, so we, so we will be split up per the open meeting law. We will not have more than two of us. At any meeting with a candidate. In terms of what we then talk with the person about, it will sort of be up to everyone to. Behave with common decency, with common decency, I guess. But my sense probably is that these kinds of lunches with. Members of the school committee and candidates would be quite standard.
So no cereal lunches then, the candidates can't. Have appetizers with two of us here, an entree and the dessert.
But I I guess then, if you, if anyone would like to do it, we don't want to get involved in radical.
Yeah.
So we let you now and then you'll.
Yeah.
You go let us know.
Yes, that's right. Oh, yeah, so that's.
If it's an open.
Yes, well, yeah, so there's, there's openings for as many as want them. I'll, I'll go have lunch by myself if everyone else is on stage. But so that's one piece of it that was mostly a heads up. The second piece that is. That that we'll have to start on right away is in terms of sort of vetting and reference checks and essentially the equivalent of a site visit. What we decided on the HR subcommittee was that trying to do site visits to all these places on this timeline. With one candidate who's not currently in a district and so forth.
We all offered that.
Everyone volunteered. That's how it fell apart. But that will essentially do more of a virtual site visit, which is to say, we'll figure out who we want to talk to. Both that they provided as references and others that we would ask to talk to and schedule a series of phone conversations. With those folks over the next week. And so there again, there's, there's a question of who sort of wants to be involved in that and has time to. And I'll just follow up to ask people to sort of raise their hands if they want to be scheduled for those. I think the sure main question would be helpful to get input on now is just if anyone has a preference for. Essentially, everybody gets to talk to references for all the candidates or everyone specializes. And we have a couple of members of the school committee that have actually dug in on each of the candidates.
Just saying it again, so.
A shortlist or this is the shortest?
This is the shortlist. So for instance, Ronnie and Dave could be team Dr. Collins and talk all Dr. Collins's references. Bob and Christine could be team Deanna and talk to those references. Or we could make sure that Dave gets a chance to talk to someone who knows Dr. Collins, someone who knows Ms. LaFond, someone, et cetera. Would people rather, I guess the question, would you rather go deep on one candidate or get a chance to hear something about all the candidates?
Can I jump ahead to sort of say where we're thinking as far as the process is, is that after we do the public interviews? Because all of this deliberation, as we all know, must be public. Then on the Thursday, when we finish our interviews and we begin our deliberation, the people that have done that will have an opportunity to sort of report out. Stale and summary. You're not gonna go word by word, but give some input as part of our deliberation. In other words. You know, just so you all know, I had a phone conference with, you know, et cetera. And that's where that information would come into the group because we have to do all of it in our public session, correct? That's what I made sure the process here that's really important because of the public nature of the way we deliberate if we do this, so. Want to kind of be clear on the process.
I I for one feel comfortable with the small team going through the final one, yeah, like.
And we did talk about teaming, two people making the call, just because sometimes. There is that, like, you hear different things, you think different things, and it's the ability rather than one, one on one and then feeling like maybe you just. You know, two people, you get a little bit more of a sense, schedule a phone call, talk to that reference and then. We can talk to each other because the two people would not be a quorum, so therefore that's an acceptable way to do it. And part of what Liz has guided us. So we're not totally.
So what we have is in each case, they had to provide three letters of recommendation and three different references. My recommendation out to to the folks who are then kind of going to follow up is. It's not, you know, you don't necessarily need to talk to every person that if they've already provided a glowing letter and and so forth. But that'll probably be useful to speak to a representative sample across supervise the person, work with the person, worked for the person. And then in addition, I think we want to make a point of speaking to a couple of people who are, were not hand chosen as references. So somebody else who. And in some cases, maybe from further back worked with the person in a meaningful context, so. My guess is it will be on the order of five per candidate, but it'll ultimately be up to. The folks making the calls to figure out what they can schedule and if they want to schedule more than that, you know, if someone mentions somebody else you should really talk to. We can always do that as well. But I think that's an advantage of having people mapped to a candidate is that. Do what we can with it.
I'm struggling a little bit with the idea of presenting the findings in public session. I I worry about somebody holding a reference that sends something negative. Or not positive and it's in our public session.
And unfortunately, we don't have a choice. We can't share information with each other about candidates, except in public session. And we don't really have a mechanism to invite all potential references here.
How have we dealt with references in the past?
They gather the information and and then. They gather the information and and would then then if there was any reservation, um. Not really sure, I mean, I you know, we we check the references and I think, you know. David, for example, checked the references on 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 one.
I I can call all one candidate's reference.
I know, we talked about it.
And I think that those um to references are all coming in very positive, maybe if they had something specific to say. But.
What's it, is it possible to talk about the the conversations that that we that we've had without identifying who made a particular comment? Like which we're, we don't have to specify which reference.
I think, yeah, I think that's right, and especially if we have two people or a candidate, I think what'll actually be more useful is to sort of synthesize. Okay, here's what we heard from the references that we want to bring back to the group, both key strengths and any concerns. Um I think if 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 we, if a sort of issue of serious concern does come up. During a reference conversation, the easiest thing to do will be to initially bring it back to Liz as the. Not member of the committee person running the search and and she will then be in a position to. Um decide what the best way to, an appropriate way to share and deal with it as needed. Um but general expectation is that that is not what. What one would find in that rather it'll be sort of helpful color to add to what we learned actually. You know, an hour, fifteen minute interview.
I wanted to kind of, you wanted two comments on that, um one again relates to are we going by now pulling in other members of. School committee, are we going outside of the form of the human resource committee um as as part of the process?
So we will split up Megan, Ronnie and I across the three candidates.
And and is the analogy that we were talking about with Liz is the subcommittee has concluded its work. The ball is now handed to this group and so we, it is now all of us, so other than Orin. Helping us with strategy and lining things up and scheduling, we are all basically delivering as a body. About who we select, so there isn't any, the HR committee isn't acting in any capacity other than helping what Orin is doing thankfully. To or orchestrate, to make sure that we have schedules.
But there'll be, but there'll be six of us theoretically, all will be, not going to be more than three people. Um investigating, uh you know, quasi interviewing.
So stuff like.
But if I get involved, I'm number four. Um like I'm, so you're saying HR committee no longer exists, it's out of their hands, so there's only three non-HR. So it's only going to be three people, I I guess I'm trying to figure out do we have a uh are we violating quorum in in some way now?
And and we had a whole, I mean, we had a, the HR subcommittee had an an hour long meeting with Liz. Solely to gloss through the correct way to structure.
So then we don't have to at any time.
I mean, technically, we could have three of the seven, but it's easy to have two.
Yeah, yeah, but 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 the but but the sub, I I I guess where I'm, what I'm struggling with is the. Is the HR subcommittee has already interacted with these people. And now I'm gathering further information on that person also. So does that then take it outside of quorum?
No, because it's a new process.
It's not, because you're not, you're not deliberating with the members of the.
It's now a new process, yeah. So but we would, for example, if everybody wants to be in, and I've already heard from some of the candidates as part of the subcommittee. I'll step back and let other people do the due diligence so that you can get a good feel. And then we'll all be present for the interview that happens next week, so.
So my 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 other point was. In in the past, the the HR subcommittee has done the um has done the follow up on on recommendations. And 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 I'm trying to, you know, you you all know them and 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 you have inside. You you have a feeling about them, or there may be some qualities you wish to explore with the references that that we don't know. And and so I I I don't know if we're, if there's value in. I- is it the most effective way to do it, or would there be greater value in 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 you and Megan? And and Ronnie, you sure have a feel for the people and you may have questions that you want to further clarify that we're not aware of. And that we may not touch on, um that that would be, that would be my only concern in 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 that.
And I think we could do that, what we were trying to do if I may, Orin, is to be more inclusive in the process. Under a guy guidance of Liz as to what a typical, in other words, we don't know what other districts do and she's giving us guidance of. Different scenarios that she's seen, so our point of it is if, for example, nobody else wanted to join us, then probably Megan, Orin and I would do that. Separately, not together, because we wouldn't be a quorum, but the idea is if we partnered and or. Step back and let one of somebody else begin to start the conversations, that that would be a good way to really get a sense.
Yeah, I think that's exactly the way to think about it is, well, we will tag. Megan, Ronnie and I to each of the three candidates, so by default, if everyone else just ignores this and setting. And never responds to the follow up email, do you want to do um any of the reference checks?
Or if you're not available, it's up to work, so they have.
Um then then that is exactly what would happen, I think the nice thing is there's an opportunity to make sure that everybody gets the chance to be more involved by. And it's more sort of an analog to if we were off going to do site visits. We would try to make sure that perhaps she's being included, so I think we certainly have the capacity to make sure all the references. Get called either way, it's it'll be sort of open to the group to decide how able and and. How much they want to um to be involved in those.
Yeah, because listen, it is very difficult to need someone called. And and then have to make a decision that that you know, that impacts the the district from yours to go.
So are are you intending to send us a follow up email like tomorrow that we just replied to? Because another another consideration here is that I have a weekend, it's a holiday and yeah, to get all the checks done.
Yeah, oh, you'll get the email tonight, don't worry.
Yeah, and I'll have to, I'm going to do anything, I'll have to do Tuesday, Wednesday, this week, I'm going Friday to Tuesday.
Yeah.
You're you're going to be in a speedy group.
Yeah, I I mean, yeah, well, I mean, I think, I think we probably want to try to do them this week, because next week we come right to interviews.
The sooner the better, I I think, I I think the reality is that we'll have a set of people we want to talk to. We'll have a couple of people who are on point for each of those.
Yeah.
Ideally, both people are able to talk to each person, in some cases, one person will be able to talk to the person, there might be someone we don't get to, but we will. Come to the interviews next week a lot more.
Is there a suggestion, list of questions or topics to pursue in the reference checks?
Um not especially, I mean, I think there's the kind of generic thing which one should ask on a reference check. And then you'll know from the resume what what the context of the individual is, and so those would be the two. Starting points.
Right, and I figured that out for the the actual interviews, in the past, we have assembled a list of questions ahead of.
Yes, that's next.
Okay, so that's, yeah, yeah.
Um okay, and then the last piece in terms of not quite reference checks, but I think something we'll want to do over the next week. Is have conversations with both members of our administration. Um as well as the LEA um to get their feedback on on the candidates and so. Um that's just sort of additional conversations that um that will be at the queue and um. We'll try to kind of pull a couple of folks into, but it'll be something we can then bring back. Um to the deliberations, again, not in our life, well, Jake said. But um you know, I think it's. Thinking just even the members of the administration who were, you know, members of the search committee, had I think a very valuable perspective on the resumes. That were very different than what I had brought, and so we want to make sure we include that as well. Um and so that will be, we'll also run, so in terms of sort of reference background checks, we'll run the standard kind of legal. Codey fingerprint types of background checks, and then we'll have this set of conversations, and that will be. Um that will be the information that we have when they arrive.
I mean, one of the things Liz said, of course, about that type of background check is that. These two, these candidates are certified by Massachusetts already, they're already part of DSS, their fingerprints are like, so there's a lot of. In that sense, they're not called to the education systems or, you know, if you were hiring somebody in a different context, you would know nothing, so the goodness is that part of it. We already made the assumption that everything's good relative to those types of issues, that's like the, sort of the. You're you're in the system, you're certified, all of that's happened, so that's that's like, we're seeing that's all been, but we will do it because it's required.
And that assumption come back provide us some of that.
Different situation, not what we're talking about, but yeah, I guess.
Okay, so the, so this, we'll come together Thursday evening after our third inter- interview. We will review reference check feedback from faculty and administration, everything else, and then and then. Vote is the plan, okay.
It was a little unclear, maybe we need to talk about it some more about how we get, maybe Jake, you have some perspective on this, through this. How we get the, so the candidates will come on Wednes- on on Wednesday and Thursday and the administration is helping to. Create that and set that up and make it all work, but that feedback obviously ultimately it's our decision, we know that it's our responsibility to. To make this decision about how we get any of that feedback and really kind of have an understanding about how that part of it works.
I mean, I think generally the the site visit part of the day when the candidate is here is seen more as the opportunity for them to get to know us. Um and then at the end of the day, they are making a decision to, and so um.
Good point, yeah.
Yeah, and so I think generally that would be the um. How I would think about that part of it.
Yeah, actually, we just had to make a lot of decisions, so I'm like, and and then staying within the rules of the open meeting, which makes it a little bit. Different than what you would normally do.
Um alright, and so then last item to Christine's point is just in terms of preparing for the interviews themselves. Um what we would propose from HR, some of these perspective is the same process we used. For the preliminary interviews, which which worked quite well. Um which is, first of all, I will circulate the set of questions we used for the preliminary interviews. Um so you all know what those were, um and then ask that everybody send me two or three questions, whether they're from the kind of standard. List or feel free to go crazy. Um and based on that, sort of we'll make sure that we have um all the key thematic areas covered. And everybody has one of their questions um as as part of the main set. Um the other thing we're going to do then is also insert um. From those of us who were in the first round interviews of a follow up question of some sort. Um and so we'll have for each candidate, full sort of the set of seven questions plus. And you know, roughly speaking, three more that are. When you spoke to the search committee, you talked a lot about X, could you say why? Um and so that'll be the sort of basic set of questions, but I think if we have an hour and fifteen minutes. Um you know, we found opening statement, ten questions, closing statement, it comfortably. With some follow up and conversation in about an hour, so with an hour fifteen, I think there will also be. Um plenty of opportunity for people jumping in with with whatever else they might have and also a couple of. Um questions at the end, if there's something more resume specific that that somebody would want to pick out as well. Um and then formally, we cannot develop the question, the question set must be formally. Established by the school committee in an open session, so what I will technically be bringing back is a organized compilation. Of what everyone had selected and we will start next Wednesday by reviewing that. If there's, oh my gosh, we don't have X, we can always put it in, and then we'll have to vote to actually adopt it as our question set before the first interview starts.
So what time, is that why, sort of the timing is, at thirty?
Yeah, so we will.
On Wednesday, five thirty.
Yeah, start at five thirty and maybe if we can interview it.
And that's a process that we, well, some of us are new on this session about what question is to, that maybe we didn't do that in the past, I think that's one of those more nuanced. Parts of it that Liz said, oh, well, you have to do this, and we were kind of like, oh. And recognize that sitting here, all of us drafting questions together in an open meeting would probably not be the best use of. Time, resources or energy, so if we all send them to one person, I'm happy that more.
We we have experienced at times in final interviews where um. Candidates have perhaps felt, or they've expanded uh quite a bit on on certain answers and on certain questions. And and we've been pushed for time at the end, um has there any thought been given to uh? And I guess a lot of it is based on on your initial interviews, however, um putting some, any type of uh limits or. Or or not even limits, but however structured, like we want to end here in case there are. Uh we want in the general question, we want to fit the general questions within this timeframe, so that we have time for follow ups.
Yeah, I think I think it went pretty well during the preliminary interviews, we sort of told them very clearly upfront, we have an hour. Start with opening statement, we have ten questions and then we want to make sure you have a little bit of time at the end to. Come back around to, you know, anything we didn't get to talk about or follow up on something. Um and for the most part, I think, you know, it it also requires committee members to police themselves and and the available time. Um but I it I think it went really well, I remember one time when there was a question that was. We were going on and I sort of had to politely say, you know, let's kind of segue to the next topic.
Um we could circle back at the end.
Yeah, and then we do have the time to circle back, so it didn't end up being an issue with including in this case the the three candidates whom that will have.
Well, we get the full package.
Yes, and I will also send out the full application packets.
Which those are common.
That's right, well, the resumes are public, the rest are considered personnel files. Um alright, well, that's.
How many questions, when you send the questions to you?
Yes.
And by what time would you like?
On that, we have time on, I'd say, you know, by the end of the week, or even as people are, we can wait until we've done reference checks. So that's less less impressive.
I did send around to everybody um some reference check questions that we. Maybe that's useful, maybe if not.
That's all I can be said.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, if I can say too, as a part of the HR subcommittee, Orin's role in organizing and working with parts with Liz that we weren't doing as part of our committees. Just been really valuable, right, really do appreciate the effort and effort that goes in as well as. A lot of effort to really make sure that all of the people in our subcommittee were were able to be heard. And be present, it was really a very collaborative process, it was really great to have the group we had. Um because I think that really, it's very interesting, we we hear the same thing and we have different perspectives on it, I think it's very important.
Yeah, I think it's it's been very good, I'm I'm excited for you guys to meet these candidates and.
Yeah.
They're they're a really good group.
Fantastic, and we, will we be, um I mean, it's sure, our Dr. Collins would be here.
Yes. Yeah. I was, those were the two options we considered and ultimately, given everyone's, you know, focus on being in a. El- in a school cafeteria, we had to decline the invitation.
Okay, so moving on, um subcommittees. Have been, many of them, except for human resources, but then a whole, they're like the teaching one and.
We we, it was at my request, because I had accomplished, we did not have our meeting in December, so we're meeting on Wednesday. And our focus right now is to kind of regroup with Jake as to where we are and how we prioritize coming forward.
And finance, uh we're going to need, this is news that, you know, the final days here for Christine and. And Orin is on Friday the twentieth at four o'clock. And in terms of the school building, um I I told you already that we were not getting funding this year, but um. The window for beginning to write the uh statement of interest is this Friday, I think, that they sent it out, it opens Friday. Probably do the end of April, um is largely going to be a cutting and pasting of what we submitted last year. And with any updates that might be necessary based on our capital budgets that we've done this past year. We'll look it over to see. Um. What else needs to be be done, but. Do we need an executive session or in in relative to?
I don't have anything.
Okay, we put it on in case.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just weren't, I think, thinking about the HR.
We were not.
Not sure.
Yeah, I don't think.
Yeah, that may be later, another need. All right.
Just real quick, before you do what I think you're gonna do, just on the HR front, did we come a decision about. Uh, remote work for the superintendent? And has that been communicated to candidates?
He did not, that I think, and he should go into executive session if you wanna discuss that as a contractual level.
I mean, does the HR subcommittee feel like that's something we need to dig into more at this time, or we can do that after the man decision?
Um. I don't feel to dig into it, but my sense is that where we had left it was. Without anything from reading in terms of contract, and so, um.
Maybe it'd be worth a quick one.
Yeah, if there, if folks do have an interest in thinking about what that might imply in a contract, then we should cover it now as opposed to.
Yeah.
So.
So I will, where's our word, or does someone else wanna do? I'm going to, I'm going to enter into executive session for the purposes of MGL chapter thirty A, section twenty one eighty two. To conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, with that would be intended for.
It's called a low call note.
I'll say it.
Or gas audit.
On which, all right.
MRI.
Brad, can I? David, what?
Hey, we are adjourned from. Okay, yes, thank you.